A motion to move into executive session concerning Colorado revised statute 24-6-402, Preface for E Contract Negotiation Review Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, need a, is there a discussion? All right, hearing that, we have roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta.
Aye.
Mr. Dryly.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Topp.
Aye.
Okay, we will move in at 5:37. Call this meeting to order on Tuesday, November 9, 2016, at 6:30 PM. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? See if anybody takes a knee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for Monica, we have roll call, please.
Mr. Archuleta.
Here.
Mr. Dryly.
Here.
Mrs. Quintana.
Here.
Mr. Rola.
Here.
Mr. Topp.
Here.
Approval of the minutes for October 25, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Hearing that, we have roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta.
Aye.
Mr. Dryly.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Topp.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes, there is an amendment to, to the minutes, there is a need to amend the agenda this evening to remove business item 2.1 from the agenda and have a study session on this item at next week, at the next meeting. And also to correct the date on business item 2.2 to read May 9-12, 2017, instead of 2016. Now, motion, please.
So moved with the amendments.
Sir, second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing that, we have roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta.
Aye.
Mr. Dryly.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Topp.
Aye.
Going on to, for the approval of the amen, of the agenda with the amends on it, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing that, we have roll call, please.
Mr. Archuleta.
Aye.
Mr. Dryly.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Topp.
Aye.
Moving on to recognition and celebrations, Dr. Abrego.
Yes, today we have two recognitions, one is the Flatiron Construction Company and the other one is Bimbo Bakery, so we're going to start with Flatiron Construction Company. I believe we have Ms. Mary Ann Mosqueta, who's going to give us some information on this.
Good evening Superintendent, four members, Monica. Flatiron Construction staff started a friendly competition amongst staff to donate school supplies for kids need, needed locally. They contacted Adams 14 to see if we could use the supplies. Flatiron was welcomed with open arms and toured the facility and some of the service provided to families and students facing the housing crisis. After that, Flatiron staff committed to collecting the, and donating more supplies and food for families in our district. In addition to this, we also received donations such as warm winter apparel and hygiene. Flatiron Construction employees have also been generous enough to adopt five Adams 14 families for holiday food and gift giving. We are grateful for the support and care, and care gifted by the, by Flatiron Construction Company employees. Your care of our students give them better opportunities to succeed. Thank you.
Do you have individuals here?
Can you have them step forward, please?
Tell me again?
Can you have them step forward?
Please, someone take pictures.
Take a picture and, who has their certificate, harvest, you got, let's step down with them, take a picture. Do you have a spouse?
Camera, camera. Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, would you want to bring your spouse?
So can I add a quick, little addition? So we did the school supplies drive funded by our staff, so a lot of people working for it. We also produced, there's around $8,000 in cash and King Super Q-bons. And I believe now we brought over small semi-travelable jackets and now that's the holiday season, but, but we're supporting that.
And one more picture?
Yeah.
Thank you, once again, thanks.
Should I trip?
Yeah.
And we also have one more, Government Board President, we have, we want to recognize Bimbo Bakery and we have Mr. Paul Sandos from Lester Arnold High School, who's going to give us some information.
Esteemed board members, Dr. Abrego, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It doesn't take much to get me to talk about Lester Arnold High School, it really doesn't, I've got a lot of pride in that place. But this is a really cool one, so here we go. Our students at Lester Arnold High School have been researching and learning about the plight of the monarch butterflies. Their numbers have been dwindling over the last several years and that has disrupted and jeopardized our ecosystem. Students have found research that part of the reason for the shrinking numbers is a lack of milkweed plant that the butterflies use as a temporary home and also lay their eggs on. So to speak, it migrates from Mexico across the US. Our students set out to find a way to generate more milkweed plants around Commerce City to sustain the butterflies. However, to do that, students really needed a greenhouse and some raised garden beds. Bimbo Bakery USA learned about the need and why kids needed these unusual supplies and so it quickly and quietly made the donation to our high school. Bimbo not only helped students today, but their supplies will aid students far into the future. Bimbo Bakery's is a very active supporter of our students, but you'll rarely see them seeking the spotlight for their charity work. There are a lot of parts to this project, I've spoken to you before about the research we do and the entomology, the bug studies, well, it's not just about the science, which is, is huge for us. I mean, you think about it, you think about anatomy, life cycle, categories, cataloging, physiology, takes me back to my days in college, KPC, IGS, on, you probably remember that, when you went to catalog, categorize things in, in science and biology class, and it came out to me this way, it was, King Philip came over for good soup, well, in college, we had another last one. But that was really telling us about kingdom phylum, class, order, family, genus, you get it, species. Now with the DNA, those are subcategories, they're built down some money, it's just huge. So yeah, we, it is a wonderful science place, but that's not the best part about it. The, the best part about it isn't even the Colorado Common Core State Standards, which, you know, that's our curriculum, that, that's what we do. But it takes into the writing piece, opinion, information, and narrative, the research turns into the information, the narrative, when we teach young kids, like the kids that we had at DuPont, come over, it gives us an opportunity to narrate, to be able to teach, and then the opinion piece on the end. But that's still not the best piece. The best piece is the real winner of building community. That's huge, it's tremendous. We need to build, in my opinion, esteemed as it is, and you can laugh at me, when we cut any one of you, you would bleed orange, angry, I know you would. Because that pride in Adams 14, that pride in Commerce City, we need to bring out over and over again. This is a great way. When they came to me, Mark Mays and, and Christina Lloyd came to me, they searched me out, I didn't find them, they found me, and we started talking and I said, oh, this is too good to be true. So I had to research them. Oh my Lord, their mission statement, their vision statement, their social responsibility piece, their our planet piece, it was exactly what I wanted to do, it was right up our alley. They're just amazing. So now, our kids go in there and we do the monarch butterfly, they've purchased for us insect catchers. So we have our entomologist on faculty, we're studying, I think I went over my time. We're studying insects from all over the world and when we teach young kids, we set our kids up for success. Because if you've ever seen the eyes of a fifth grader, when he looks at all these cool bugs, under the big magnifying glass, and they get to see them, their eyes get this big. But you know what I really love? Is when they came out, and when people come to visit us, Dr. Abrego and others come to visit us, and our kids take you out to the greenhouse, you just see that pride in their eyes. They get so excited to explain their project, they can't wait to show you what they've done. And that leads folks into great scores. Mark Mays and Christina Lloyd, Bimbo Bakery's USA. They don't know it yet, but I got other plans. My wife's back there going, oh, don't get him started, he'll go about scholarship funding, he's going to go all these other things. I have some ideas about scholarships for Lester Arnold kids that we're going to go, I have some ideas on where else we go with our science program. Being a science teacher, I love it, but guys, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Would you like to say?
Sure.
Go ahead, get up on the mic.
Well, in fact, the, the pleasure's all ours, in fact, and he's right, we did, we did seek you guys out, we thought there was a need here and I'm so glad that we filled the need and has, what's so, what's so rewarding about it is just how graceful and grateful this school has been and, and in fact, they've renamed the Student of the Month Award, the Bimbo Bakery Student of the Month Award, and I don't know who gets more joy out of it, the bakery or you guys, we, we're just absolutely thrilled to be aligned with such a cool situation. We try to be the best business in Commerce City, we try to be the best baking company in the world and to align ourselves with such a cool organization, it's a match made in heaven, the pleasure's all ours, we have this Good Neighbor Project every year and we hope to continue to come back and just do, and, and just provide as much benefit as we humanly can, as we, as our, as our budget will permit. But this has been great, the, the greenhouse has been awesome and the traps have been awesome, and to see those kids and it is, we, we got them these, what do we get them, those aprons and it has Bimbo Bakery's on it, so there's a really cool sense of pride to see them out there, you know, doing things. And then we've also, if I may, we've also been able to, and I believe we've hired a few students right into the bakery and it, it's a living wage, man, it's a really good living wage. So we've got some good kids, good education, and it's right down the street, man, so it's, it's great, it's awesome for us. Thank you so much for allowing us to do it.
We do, I, I just gave them a letter from one of my girls who graduated three weeks ago, on, she applied at Bimbo Bakery, she was accepted on the bakery down on I-25, I think, in Isle, and she wrote a nice letter to them thanking them. So there wa, there was a little selfishness on my part, I want my kids to go to work for Bimbo Bakery and, and we'll talk about how we're going to turn them into college scholarships here later.
Board President Rola, those are our two recognitions for the day.
First one will be Barb McDowell.
Barb McDowell, I am speaking on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association, sorry, I forgot what I was going to say. Good evening, President Rola, Superintendent Abrego, members of the board. I am here today to talk with you a little bit about what the Classroom Teachers Association has been doing. As you know, for the last year and a half, we have been really pushing community schools, knowing that it takes a village to educate all of our children. And some of the things we've been working on is, in July, I believe, I told you, we went to Pine Lakes Ranch, which is one of our farthest, it actually is our farthest development that our children attend, they out on Thornton, 100th and Colorado Boulevard, and they had been having some issues with transportation and other things and disenfranchisement of that community. We've had a couple of parent forums with them at their site and we're going to be, we've been empowering parents there and having them come, we're going to, they're going to speak to other parents at all sep and we're going to sit with them, we've been sponsored by, we've had a lot of support from our state affiliate, Colorado Education Association. Secondly, last week, we attended a restorative justice training, which also is a part of the Community Schools Forum, and I was thrilled that Timmy O was able to join us, Sheila Burke, the principal at Central, Dolores Bodkin, a third grade teacher at Central, and myself, all attended. It was, the training was led by community, sorry, Chicago Schools, or Chicago Restorative Justice. We had three phenomenal trainers that taught us how to, sorry, it's a way to ward off behaviors before behaviors get to come forward. I think there's a lot of misconception about restorative justice and so it's really, it was really powerful and I was glad that Mr. Archuleta and Ms. Burke were able to attend with us. We had three trainers and one is a Chicago police officer who leads peace circles with police all over the country. We had Rita Allred, who is, who leads restorative justice trainings over in Oakland, California. And it was just an empowering thing, it was an empowering workshop, so thank you for coming. And today, actually, it benefited a lot of our students because it was a difficult time for a lot of our students today. So that's what's going on, thank you, have a great evening.
Next one will be Reba.
Good evening, President Rola, Dr. Abrego, members of the board, Monica. So, I have, I have been authorized by a very wonderful person to tell you that a rock star is coming to Commerce City and he's asked me to ask you for help. So Santa is coming to Adams 14, to Adams City High School, on, on the morning of December 3rd, and the fire department has been authorized to bring him and Mrs. Santa to the school. And so, we are acting as Santa's helpers and we're going to turn the gym and the hallways into Candy Cane Lane and to a winter wonderland. And so this is the 18th Annual Winter Fest of Commerce City and I'd like to thank members of the city that are here tonight, Mr. Tinklinburg, Mr. Kramer, because the city gave us $2,000 to do this, Adams, Adams County gave us $1,500 for this, and this is in partnership with Commerce City Business and Professional Association and the very wonderful Adams 14 Foundation, Mr. Dale Mingleton and his fabulous board, so we're going to do a great job for these kids. And the name of this is Pajamas, Pancakes and Santa. Now, you want to know what Santa wants you to do, right?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we all do, everybody wants to know what they can do to help. So we would like to propose, this is, by the way, we're inviting the elementary and middle schools and the high school of 27J, the Commerce City part, to join us in this, this will be the first time that we've ever done this, and in this fashion. So Santa would like to know if this board, and we're going to also be asking 27J board, if you would sponsor for $175 the hot chocolate, and if you so choose to man that table with assistance from other elves, because the kids would love to see you there. And he said that you would all get a Santa hat, so I think that's, you know, very generous of them. And we're going to be giving away trees, the school, each school is going to be participating by decorating two trees, each tree will be given away. And we're going to have a gingerbread house contest, so that's awesome, if you are inclined to do anything like that. And we usually do this on the same day, sort of, our food baskets, but that is going to be done on December 19th at, putting them together at Adams City Middle School. And I know he doesn't want me to say anything, but Mr. Sandos has already said he would contribute 50, so please ponder this and I hope to see you there. And if you can tell Ms. Monica what your decision is, thank you.
I guess we can do that now and, it was how much, Reba, 100 and what?
175.
Motion, motion to donate 175 dollars to the, what are you calling it?
Seek Santa Pancake.
Pancakes, pajamas.
Pancakes, pajamas, pancakes and Santa.
And you can wear pajamas if you want.
That's right, I will be in pajamas. And Ms. Janelle there said that the school district would be contributing coloring pages to our baggies that we, so we're expecting 2,000 children, so very exciting.
All right, so, you have a motion?
So, are we doing more than 175?
What's that?
Are we going to do more than 175?
Be good, or they have to ask for, how much do you want, you can motion to you.
Timmy O, I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend your motion to take the 175 up higher.
Okay, who do you want to take it up to?
500.
Okay. It's been a motion to go from 175 to 500, do I hear 1,000? All right, I guess I'm not a good auctioneer. All right, so, $500, it's been motion 500, it's been second, is there a discussion? Okay, so do we have a consensus, we can't vote on this, but?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So, there'll be a consensus there, Monica, for, to give 500 dollars to this Christmas party, and I guess we'll all be dressed in pajamas, right? So.
So now we're going to challenge 27J, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's it for audience comments, moving now to superintendent's report.
Yes, President Rola, today on the superintendent's report, we have the community development presentation by the City of Commerce, so if they would come up here, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Chris Kramer, I am the Community Development Director for the City of Commerce City. I want to thank you for inviting us here tonight to give you a presentation regarding the Mile High Greyhound Park project. It's an exciting project and the timing of your request is especially good, and I think you'll find out why as we get through this. I'm going to give you a, a, a brief overview of some of the history of the project, I'm going to turn it over to our developer partner, Rick Wells, to talk about where we're at in the planning of the project, and then we'll probably wrap up with the, just a, if there's any questions and knowing that we will have future discussions with members of the district moving forward. So I know you've got a full agenda, we'll try and keep this appropriately timed. I do have two people joining me tonight, Roger Tinklinburg, deputy city manager with the city, and Rick Wells, who heads up Regen LLC. Just, you guys are all longtime members of the community, I'm sure everybody in the audience as well, just to do highest level background, just for a few moments. The Mile High Greyhound Park project, Rick will show you a map of where exactly it is we're talking about, but you all know it, it was a Mile High Kennel Club, opened in 1949, in the eighties it peaked in its attendance, started to slow down in the 2000s. In the 80s, it peaked in its attendance, started to slow down in the 2000s, it closed in 2008. Sat vacant for three years and the Urban Renewal Authority of Commerce City purchased it in 2011. It was important for our Urban Renewal Authority Board to purchase it because of the role it has played in the history of our community. Its location has really served as an anchor for our community for a long time and council was extremely interested in seeing it continue that role. After they purchased the property, there was some outreach performed and a feasibility study was done. As a part of that feasibility study, there were a few project goals that were highlighted and I do want to real briefly cover those. There's only six and I can do it quickly, but I think they're relevant for our conversation tonight. One is to create a flexible masterwork framework plan. Make sure that whatever we do, we're not too locked in. Create a mixed-use and multi-use neighborhood. A single-use development isn't necessarily what the residents had in mind, isn't what council had. Those mixed uses provide a variety of activities throughout the course of a day that will help provide that role of the heart of the community. Provide a variety of retail and commercial development options. We heard this from the community loud and clear. There are a variety of retail needs that a lot of people expressed, including a sit-down restaurant, that a lot of people would like to see. Create a community destination, number four, create a community destination and sense a place. Again, this has been a special place for Commerce City residents. We'd like to see it continue that way. Number five, provide space for the Boys and Girls Club. That part is already done, as they have opened and extremely successful. Six, hold a portion of the property for an institutional anchor, education or training while pursuing development on the remainder of the property. It has been, council and our Urban Renewal Authority Board have made it clear from the very beginning that education is a key part of this project. It is one of the six project goals. Now, what happened is after we got done with that, our council said that we needed a master developer, a developer partner. They, they felt that the city is not in the position of being the developers themselves, that we needed a partner to help us with that. So, we solicited developers and through that selection process, Regen LLC was selected and we began those negotiations with Regen LLC. Through the course of that, we eventually signed a master developer agreement earlier this year in April. And in that conversation, the, a big part of the function of the project was really, it was realized that an urban renewal authority plan and process was going to be needed if this project was going to be able to succeed. And that's partly why we're here tonight. The Urban Renewal Authority, we, we will need to ensure that we work out with you. It has impacts for the school district and benefits for the school district, so we'll need to work out an agreement with you about how that's going to work out moving forward. So, that's my portion of the intro. I'll come back up at the end. I'm going to turn it over to Rick and he can talk to you about where we're at with the planning and the zoning of the project.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. Appreciate it. My name's Rick Wells. I'm with Regen LLC and it's really just me and a couple people that I work with. We're a small group, but we do some big projects. We've done some redevelopment at the Gates Factory Site down at I-25 and Broadway. We redeveloped the Mercy Hospital Site at 17th and Fillmore and worked on the Children's Hospital redevelopment. So this is what we do, is do large-scale urban renewal projects and we do it in the, in the Denver metro area, suburbs and city. So, I'm partnering with the city. Let me go through briefly just kind of what we're planning so you understand what some of the opportunities and what some of the impacts are going to be from the project. Location-wise, we're, the building we're in is just slightly off the map to the south. This is the old Greyhound Park site. It's about 60 acres. The only thing that's on there that really is going to be reused in some form or, or not is the green strip on the far east northeast edge and that is a stormwater pond. That's a regional stormwater facility that actually doesn't serve this site. It serves this building and 400 acres to the south and to the east of the site and so it really is a city facility. It's not specific to this site. In fact, this site has to build its own stormwater. And then the Boys and Girls Club in the southeast corner of the quadrant is already built and already in service. The roads, nothing inside of the site is reusable. There's no water lines, there's no sewer lines, there's no stormwater, there, there is no buildings, there's nothing inside the site. In fact, there's more demolition to do to take up the asphalt and clean up the site. What our plans are is to turn what you see as just vacant asphalt into essentially a new community in Commerce City. And that's what, that's our objective. Chris told you about what the, the city's objectives are and ours are, to participate and help them through that process and make this real. Some of our guiding tenants are, about how you build a community, I think, are really important and then we can skip through some of the details, but we do want a mix of, of product type. We want different types of housing products, both for sale and for rent. We want those different housing types to be available to different income ranges, affordable market rates, so people who live in Commerce City can build, can move into a new facility or people who aren't living here can find a place to live and, and work in Commerce City. We want housing that spans generations, housing that is appropriate for senior and housing that's appropriate for new families. We want a high quality of housing. You shouldn't be able to stand in the development and say, oh, that's the affordable building and that's the market rate building. You should just be able to look around and say, this is a great place to live and not know what the income ranges of the people who are, who are living in those products. It needs to be a safe, connected, walkable neighborhood. This is a great area to live in. You've got the rec center over here, you've got retail all along Parkway Drive, there's going to be a new bus route coming through here that's going to connect to the A-line and we want to be, people to be able to walk through the neighborhood, around the neighborhood and, and enjoy their, their living in Commerce City. We also want it to be active, programmed, lively. What we start with is how do you connect this to the rest of the neighborhood? We do have an existing neighborhood that we have to respect and integrate into. One of the first things we have to do is figure out traffic. The second thing we have to figure out is how do you deal with water quality and parking and things like that? This is the traffic grid that we're proposing. You can see where it connects at Parkway and up on the north. We essentially bring a road through the site. We bring a road from the west side into the site at about what the alignment of 63rd is. You might ask yourself, why doesn't 63rd go through the site and make a cross across the site? And the reason is because of that stormwater facility. That pond really actually is too small for what it is serving right now. It has to be enlarged. And so as that gets bigger, it makes it impossible to take 63rd through the site. But we do have connecting roads so that people who are outside the neighborhood can go through, people who live inside the new neighborhood can move through and move out. The next thing, as we talked about, is stormwater. It's a big part of any development of this size. You have to be able to treat your own stormwater to appropriate standards. And in this case, we had the extra challenge of being able to size the regional stormwater facility, which you now see on the, on the east side is much larger than it was before. It literally has to more than double in size in order to meet current standards for the city. So again, this is serving an off-site facility, but it's important to how we look at the site and some of the investment that has to be made in the site in order to make this work. On the central part of the site, you'll see where we have some additional stormwater facilities on a couple of quadrants. We have what we call a usable stormwater area in the center of the site and then a park area. We have a lot of green spaces connecting the site. And again, this is a part of walkable communities, being able to walk from one place to the other, walk from a park to the, to a retail, to a hotel, to, to the, to existing neighborhood. Some of the things, we talked about the pond. I think the pond's kind of important, especially for this neighborhood. Right now, it's, it is literally just a weed pit. There's nothing, nothing about it that's a positive for the community. It's got to get bigger in order to meet standards, but the city is committed to invest into it in order to make it more of an amenity to the area while still serving its function, which is a stormwater facility. And it's important, we think, because of the proximity to the Central Elementary. You've got Central Elementary up there on the corner of Holly and 64th and those kids, as they walk out of that school through the neighborhoods, if you walk along Holly, it's a sidewalk that's right up against the street and then you've got a fence with the stormwater on the other side and it's just not a great condition. We're going to improve that. We're going to make it so that there's a safe connect, there's a walking path that's not right on the street. There's a tree lawn in between Holly and the walking path. There's going to be a walking path on both sides of the pond so that people can walk around it safely at all hours and feel like it's a comfortable place to go. So it's really is going to get improved, but that does cost money. Proposed land uses, this is real briefly what we are proposing in terms of densities. The one thing I want to, and uses, the one thing I do want to point out in particular is the education quadrant. Chris talked about that that's a commitment from the city, that we're going to build or facilitate building some sort of a joint use education training facility that benefits the, the Commerce City community. In this quadrant, we're looking at primary retail, hotel, some sort of a inline retail, perhaps a couple of, of mid-size service or retail establishments, single-family homes to match up with the single-family homes on the existing north side, getting a little denser as it goes south. So, a mix of residential densities in here, probably more multifamily rentals or for-sale townhomes. And then on the south edge, where it gets closer to the existing commercial corridor, we've got what we call a mixed-use neighborhood, where we do hope that we get commercials, small office, ground floor retail, residential, a mix, true mix of uses so that you can bring the, the energy that's on Parkway Drive up into the site and continue that through the new development. The training and education quadrant I want to focus on because we're talking to you all and we think that is an opportunity that this brings to the site. We're, the city is serious about it. We've already started talking to potential partners, including yourselves, about the opportunity to partner with Adams County Schools, you know, this one, other districts, wherever it becomes appropriate, junior colleges in the area, training institutions in the area to really focus on bringing a new education opportunity into the south Commerce City area. And we haven't figured it all out yet. We know that we want to partner with folks like you to do that and that's part of what we'll be talking to you about as we go through this process. Residential, don't want to focus on this too long, but again, we talked about multifamily, single-family, seniors, wide ranges of income, that's really what we're, what we're looking for. This is the pretty picture that everybody likes that starts to show what it might look like and I have to say this every time I give this, the one thing I can guarantee is it won't look exactly like this. Because plans do change over time, markets do change over time, individual builders are going to have their own ideas about what they want to build, but we're putting the zoning together now so that this sort of a project is what we're aiming for and looking for builders to come in and build. So you can see the educational, a couple of educational buildings up here, retail, single-family homes, parks, here's the big pond, Boys and Girls Club, and then some multi, some different types of housing in here along with mixed-use office retail. This is the, a pretty picture, bird's eye view, they call it, of what this might look like, kind of in a 3D scale. Schedule-wise, we're in the zoning process right now. We're putting together urban renewal plan right now. We're going to be moving through that process over the next couple of months. We're going to be wanting to meet with you to talk about what sort of a, an agreement we can come to in terms of what you get, what we get, how does the urban renewal plan work as regards to funding? And you're going to have, you're going to need to be a part of that. You're going to want to be a part of that. And then we work through that. What we're aiming for is that sometime fall, call it a year from now, we're actually breaking ground on the project and starting to build the infrastructure, not the vertical product first, but the roads and the water and some of the, the pieces that need to be put together so that somebody can come and then build the homes. I, I want to just back up a little bit. As far as build-out, we do expect this to take a long period of time. 60 acres is a, is a big piece around, takes a while to develop and absorb that much product into an existing neighborhood. And so we do expect at a minimum five, but probably more like five to 10 years over, for the complete build-out of the project over time. Not to belabor the details, we did want to say, what is the impact? We've talked about one of the opportunities, which is partnering with the training, the training development in the area. One of the impacts is with new residences come new families and new school-aged children. And so based on the current plan, and this is just based on the current plan, we have a mix of multifamily, single-family, townhomes, seniors product. In total, that's a little over 600 units, plus or minus. And using some ratios that we found in the Internet of All Knowledge and some other studies, we've come up with some estimates of what that relates to in terms of school-aged children for different types of schools. So elementary, 130, middle school, 40, high schools, 60 or 70, plus or minus, a total of 233. That's an estimate and I want to caution again, that's over a long period of time. So that, they don't all just show up on day one and say, hey, I'm ready to go to school. We're talking about not even having the first student show up until a couple of years from now and then that building over time, a period of five to 10 years. How does this work in terms of the urban renewal process and, and why it's important that we work together on this? We talked about the fact that there's nothing there right now. We, we need to invest in infrastructure. We need to build roads, water, sewer, et cetera. That's my part of the investment, but the story really started before that. The city started with buying the property. So the city put a loan to the Urban Renewal Authority, which then bought the property and is putting it into the project. The city is also committing to improve that pond we talked about and that's important why we talked about it because we're estimating that's about a $2 million idea to improve, amenitize, enlarge that pond, the regional stormwater pond. The city wants to get paid back for that, as you could expect, and they get paid back from that, from the project, through the Urban Renewal Authority, back to the city and the project does that by having an urban renewal plan that allows it to capture the incremental new property and sales tax that are generated by the new development on the site. So this is important. We're not going to be asking for any sort of property tax or sales tax from anything outside the boundaries of that 60 acres. So, right now, that, that site generates nothing. No property tax, no sales tax, nothing. It's just literally a hole in the, in the city, a hole in the economics. What we wanted to do is to start to generate property tax by us first investing in the infrastructure and that's this part right here, my company putting in $10 million into the infrastructure so that that gets built so that then we sell pads, residential and building pads, to developers who then pay for the land. That, that, the, the revenue we get from that gets split between myself, to get me paid back for my investment, plus what the city gets to get paid back for their investment. The rest of it, the bulk of it, quite frankly, needs to come from urban renewal financing and that's the tax increment. And so it'll be from new development onsite, we'll self-generate that property tax and sales tax and we're looking to capture that to repay the investment in the project. That's how urban renewal works and we've done it successfully. I've done it on a couple of different projects, City of Denver and some other areas and we can talk about that in more detail, but it is a model that works well when everybody cooperates and gets something out of it. And that's really where we're at now, is to talk about where do we go from here to figure out the next steps.
This is basically the last slide, so you guys are, we're almost done. The project, as, as Rick described it though, obviously is going to have some impacts for the district. In addition to needing that agreement, it's probably, I think it's important for, for the board to understand what we understand the impacts to you might be. So this, this slide talks a little bit about what we perceive the impacts to you to be because I think it'll form the basis of our ongoing negotiation for this agreement. So, if we have the school district here in the middle, we look at some of the other outside forces that might impact it. So the project itself is going to generate an impact fee. So, this is occurring right now on all land that is developed residentially. If the project does not dedicate land to you, the district, we have an agreement with you, we collect an impact fee in lieu of that dedication of land. In this case, there is no school set aside, school land set aside, so that fee in lieu would be $163,000. Rick mentioned the, the tax increment financing, the portion of the property tax and the sales tax that the, the project would utilize to pay back the infrastructure, that revenue that would have normally gone to not only yourselves, but the fire district and, and all the other taxing entities. Interesting note, this, the Department of Education does reimburse school districts and only school districts for that, less than, assuming that the money that they have available for that reimbursement. Right now, that's at 88.5% of the cost of 85 cents on the dollar, in essence. So other, other ways that the school, the district may be impacted, the city is interested in that continuing education piece and being partners with Adams County School District 14. We're not sure what form that's going to take. We're not sure if that's a community college, some other continuing education, technical training, we're not sure yet. We have had some very good preliminary discussions with a variety of folks. What we do know is we would like to partner with you on that. We think Commerce City students are, are the logical fit for this training. So therefore, we see you as being a big portion of that. Finally, there's the, the horizontal infrastructure that is, is a part of this and that's really what's sort of generating the need for that, that tax increment financing that, that Rick mentioned. So, between all of that, there are some impacts to the district and there's certainly ways that the district is getting certain things from that. And this is attempting to show that. It's complex. There's a lot of moving pieces. These graphics attempt to simplify it. It's actually even more complicated than these graphics. We look forward to hearing, having more conversations with you and we look forward to hearing from you, what else? There's been previous conversations with the, the district. We know that there needs to be conversations about what other ways can this project help the school district, help with these impacts. So, as we move forward, we'll be reaching out to you to schedule some continued discussions and, and conversations and we look forward to hearing back from you about ideas you may have about what, what you think would, the project can do to help out. So with that, we'll conclude our presentation and any of us are available for any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Thank you to the board for allowing me to attend the Urban Renewal Development meetings and be involved in this conversation. Just so everybody knows, that $163,000 in lieu of money there is a one-time payment. It's not every year, it's not every 10 years, it's a one-time payment for property, and I don't know how much property would be designated for schooling if we took the property instead of the money, it wouldn't be much, I wouldn't think, because there's only 60 acres of land there in total. So, you know, it allows us to have an opportunity to speak with you folks, and prior to us being on the board, Urban Renewal Development was never, it was meant for the city, it was never meant for the impact on anybody else, it was a city proposal. And through legislation, the legislator said, you need other players involved in those conversations, not just the city, it needs to be the fire district and the school district and everybody else that are going to be players. And that's how I got assigned to the board, and I want to thank you for all of the information. The meetings have been very, for me, as a community member also, very informative, you know, I learned a lot of things in meeting with you guys one-on-one. I know that Harvest has probably met with you folks more than twice, and Dr. Bragel's been there the two times that I've been with you folks, but I've been to different meetings with theirs, so I just want to say, you know, thanks for the conversation, and we'll continue to have them.
Sure. And let me just build on what the board member was talking about as far as the school land dedication. So there are formulas that dictate an obligation for school and dedication, and the size of the project dictates how much a school district can ask for. And so a project of 60 acres, it's going to be two acres, one acre, it's not very much, and it's certainly not enough land to build a school on, even the smallest elementary. So the fee in lieu is a way for smaller developments to contribute to the needs, the school land needs, that they're helping to contribute to. So it's a good system, because it allows even those one and two lot infill projects to still do their part, even though obviously the school district isn't going to ask for their land, it's just an acre or half an acre, yet they still get to participate in that. That's what this fee in lieu is doing, just at a slightly larger scale.
Harvest, anything?
No, I'm good.
I guess I do, I mean, you showed the program, you say what we're going to get, but my understanding is that you're going to, the city is going to buy modular for the district to house those, because right now, your project calls for the students in that area to go to Central, and right now, Central's busting at the seams. So there's no way that we would be able to house those unless you are able to help us. Is that modular still in play, or no?
So there were previous conversations, thank you for that question, there were previous conversations, and that was an element that was discussed as a way to alleviate some of the impacts specifically to Central. In some of our one-on-one conversations, I think we want, we don't want to presume how this negotiation will occur. The project and Regen are certainly still willing to make that kind of contribution to the district, absolutely. We didn't want to presume that, you don't see that on this screen, because we want to make sure, we want to hear from you, you can see at the bottom, what else can the project do to help? If that turns out, and you guys talk amongst yourselves, and that's what you want to propose to us, I can tell you right now, we have already contemplated that and would be open to it. But maybe that's not it, maybe it's something else, we just don't want to be presumptuous.
And my, I guess my fear, and I won't, probably won't even be on the board when all this is taking place, but my fear is that we go to the community to ask for a bond to build the schools bigger, and we're not getting it, but yet, the city's going out there and allowing all these houses to come in. We have the project at the dog track, which you're talking about, but then we just have another eight units going up on 64th, between 64th and Monaco and Kearney going up, which is going to bring kids, which means they go to Central. Then my understanding is, and maybe you can help me, that on Kearney, that big vacancy, somebody has proposed to put up 140-some units.
I don't think it's quite that many, but there is a proposal for a multifamily project.
Okay, so that means more kids, so where is the city going to help us to house the kids that go into, once again, Central? All the building is going on, and the city keeps saying, okay, go ahead and build, 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 build. How are we going to?
Understood, and just to provide a little context, it's an extremely relevant point. A lot of those other projects, their zoning is in place. The only review that the city is allowed to do is to make sure that it meets the standards, but once the zoning is in place, those projects are going to be moving forward. This project is different, we are going through the zoning process, and we are going to go through an urban renewal process whereby we would want to have an agreement set up with you guys. We do, we are open, we do want to listen and see what you guys would like to do to allow us to help with that. I know previously there is modulars, but if it's something else, we would like to hear what your ideas are.
Any other questions?
Okay, Joe.
Chris, with the extra students, we also have issued the traffic congestion right there now, and how's the city going to fix 64th and Holly?
That's a good question.
No parking at Central, there, it's congested in the afternoon, I mean, it's a nightmare for those kids, safety-wise, to get around, and they're going to have to walk across to go home to the ground park, so what is the city going to do with 64th and Holly?
So as you might recall, the city received a grant for the safe routes to school for that area a number of years ago, and some improvements were made then, but I know that there are some circulation challenges as it relates to drop-off in the afternoon. This project, through its planning process, is going to have to do a traffic study. An initial one has already been submitted, a final one will have to be completed as we move through this, and it looks at precisely those things. In fact, it's not only going to look at that, it's also going to look at the signal at 62nd and Parkway, 62nd and Dahlia, and 64th and Dahlia, where we have the signals there. Those are concerns that we have, not only on that one, on a number of them, and the traffic study will help guide us to understand what are the impacts, and where do we need to allocate potential mitigation factors. So I don't have the specific answer for you today, that's the purpose of going through the planning process, so we can see what needs to be done.
Well, it goes back to that.
If you guys want to offer a modular at Central, as far as the fact is, that brings more traffic, more congestion, that's already over-congested in that area.
Well, again, if you have, if you think that there are other ways that we can help with that situation at Central, we look forward to hearing what those would be. And I don't think we need to necessarily hear that tonight or anything, but I do think, we look, genuinely, we want to help, and so we want to hear from you.
Chris, if I could add, I mean, I just think that's an excellent point, because you live in the neighborhood, you all know the neighborhood, you know, I'm out here every week, two or three times a week, so I'm learning the neighborhood, but I'll never know it as well as the locals do. So things like that are really important to hear for us, so, because those are things we can work on mitigating, right? I mean, that can be a part of the plan, is how do we, if we're adding this many children, and we're, the good news is, we're going to give them a safe place to walk, once they get onto the property, to get where they need to go, but let's think about how we get them to the property in a more safe and sane manner. So I think those are good ideas that we can work together on to try and mitigate some of the impacts and take advantage of the opportunity, so that's exactly the kind of input we're looking for.
I mean, I'd just like to also say, it's not only Central that's going to be impacted, Sandhome's going to be impacted, Kearney's going to be impacted, and the high school's going to be impacted, somewhere along the way, too.
Other questions?
I have a question for the board, if it's all right?
Sure.
As we move forward in this process, you know, we need to enter into some more formal discussions, who is our best contact, who will we be having these conversations with? And you don't have to answer this tonight, but if you guys can think about that, we would look forward to finding out who our best contact would be for that.
Be the superintendent.
Is it? Okay.
Just to the board, for clarification, when I got involved in the project, the mention of the modular was out there, and I just asked him to make sure that we have all board members involved, and we wanted to start over with the project, so that could be on the table, could not, but I wanted the board members to have input on that.
And we also do know that everything is negotiable as far as the land on the dog track, or swapping land, or everything's negotiable, right?
Is that a question?
Yes, very much.
We look forward to hearing your ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, because I was thinking about a modular. One of, how big is the modular? Because a modular really only houses two classrooms. So two classrooms, the most you could put in there is maybe 60, 50 to 60 students? And we'll be getting more elementary students, really, than the bigger kids. So I'm just kind of concerned with one modular.
The type of modular, and how many kids, you know, we actually got some specifications from your staff about ones that would work well. I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure what the specs were on how many classrooms, how many students it would hold, I don't remember that part, I apologize, but I do know.
Those are bigger than years ago.
I know that it was a, and this is not a technical term, but I know it was a fancy schmancy facility that was specifically designed for classrooms, it's not just a trailer, the specs that were given to us, so.
So, because most of our schools have modulators, and you split them right down the middle, and it's two classrooms, that's it. That's, and that's, we're talking, and I've been in them with fifth graders, and most of them are bigger than me. So that's why I was, I was just a little curious, is it one, is it going to be two modulators, because we're talking 130 kids, maybe. I know he said not all at once, but you can't really predict that.
Again, I.
I know they won't be there all at once.
Yeah, but I, but I'm.
I can't predict that, they will not all show up on day one.
But I understand what you're saying.
But they show up, you're right, you can't predict exactly how.
But if you look at Central, there's about 650 kids in that little school.
And that's why we're here talking to you.
So that's why the concern is about, you know.
And we understand that.
Well, not only the kids' impact, we also have, we have to hire teachers.
And I want to back up and just say, I can't run your school district, okay? That's what you do. What we can do is recognize that if, let alone, without an urban renewal plan, that property doesn't get developed, anything like this, I don't know exactly what it gets developed like, but it's not anything like what you saw here. If doing what we're trying to do and building a new community here, which we think is a good thing, happens, it needs the urban renewal plan. In order to do that, we need some of the funds that come from property taxes, and that impacts you, and the new students impact you. And so whether there was a new, I assure you, I did three urban renewal deals in the City of Denver before the new legislation got passed, I sat down with the school district every time and talked through what the impacts were about the urban renewal area. So we're not here just because of the new urban renewal legislation, we're here because we want to be a part of this neighborhood and make this neighborhood better and add to it, not take away from it. We don't want your schools to get worse, we want our schools to get better. I don't know the answer, but that's what we're here to talk about, and that's what we're going to sit down with you all and talk about.
How many acres are dedicated to the educational?
It was about, it's five to six, plus or minus, is what it is, on the inside, it's not.
Five to six.
About 10%.
I do want to highlight Rick's statements about what happened in Denver. The city had reached out, you know, that legislation that Board Member Archuleta was referring to went into effect this year, we had, we reached out to the school district well before that, we also reached out to the fire district well before that, and then Adams County well before that, and that's consistent with what I understand happened on the Victory Crossing urban renewal project as well. So I think Rick is right, we aren't here just because we have to be, we see you as partners in this, and so that's why when we have these continued negotiations, we look forward to hearing, you know, what you think. We don't know, we're not the school folks, right? What do you think we need to do to be able to help address some of these needs that are existing? So unless there's any other questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, and guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
And that's all we have on the superintendent's report, and thank you very much, government board members, and Timmy and I will continue to attend the meetings and try to keep the board informed of what's going on.
Numerous policy items were discussed during the business portion of the meeting. The public can always see meeting agendas and meeting minutes by navigating to adamss14.org. Click on About Us and select Board of Education.
Okay, there's no student board, so moving on to routine items, consent, I need a motion for the approval of personnel. 1.0, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will have to abstain, because I know two of the people being recommended for hire.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Keetavon?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to businesses, 1.0 grant, I'll need a motion on superintendent's recommendation for the approval to apply and accept a grant to provide a full-time certified athletic trainer to Adams City High School for the 2016-2017 school year. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, I read in here where there has to be agreement of where the trainer and the games that the trainer attends, so who makes that agreement with the trainer, and how many games or events that this trainer has to attend?
We have Mr. Thompson from High School, they have to answer some questions for us.
So that would be all our events, that's a regular trainer, just like we have at the school, although this one's coming from the Denver Broncos and Children's Hospital, trying to expand athletics in school districts, so.
So how is this trainer going to attend all events if we have multi-events on the same day?
So we currently have a trainer, but this other trainer will attend other events. Most of the full contact events, wrestling, football, those types of events, that's where you really need them, they could rotate some of the volleyball and things like that, so. Thank you.
Mr. Tom, another, so have we, we're going to keep Victor on board?
Yes.
Okay, now, is he volunteer, or do we give him a?
Victor's a, he's a paid athletic trainer.
Okay, so we'll actually have two athletic directors, and this will be?
This one's through a grant.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and we are hoping to, with this program, thinking far out, is to be able to, as we start that CTE program with Children's Hospital and CU, is to start having a athletic training kind of class, and so some of our kids can actually help tape ankles in the training room, go out on the field when a kid sprays an ankle, or a kid's hurt, help them ice it down and things like that, so.
That would be sports medicine?
Sports medicine, yes, thank you.
That'd be good, and I'm thinking maybe with those kids, we could send down to the middle schools.
Absolutely, yep.
You know, I mean, not to major, but to do the taping and.
Yeah, exactly.
So, good.
Sure, yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye. Excuse me, aye.
Mr. Drylin?
Aye.
Mrs. Keetavon?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 2.2, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of overnight field trip by the Kearney Middle School students to Mesa Verde National Park, Colorado on May 9th through 12th, 2016, and their fundraising efforts. Oh, wait a minute, that's got to be 2017. That's where we made the.
The adjustment.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, Monica?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point three, superintendent's recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to the school do web-based cloud software renewal. So moved. Is there any discussion?
Yes. We're saying four out of five of the modules will be expanded.
Yes, I can explain that. Currently, the school dude has a module that tracks the inventory of the district, work orders that go out to the district. They also do facility usage, our utilities, so, and then the last module that you see on there is Facility Direct, which is community use module and/or athletics, use that to set up the gyms or the athletic fields.
And what about the fifth module? Are we going to do anything with that, or what's the problem with that module?
No, I was just saying, four out of the five, the last module is going to be paid for out of the community use fund rather than the general fund. So the general fund will come out of the, the first four modules will come out of the general fund, which would be the operational fund. That would support the maintenance work orders, the utility work orders, and also, let me see what else here. Inventory, facility maintenance. There's a PM module that goes with that, maintenance module that is not listed here, and then also, I'm making sure I have them all counted for in the work order.
Thank you.
So, we're just clarifying that four of the modules will be funded out of the general fund of operations. The other one will come out of the fee support fund for the facility use usage, which is the community use portion of that web-based program. So it's self-funded.
Good enough, Harv?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Scott. All right. Can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point four, superintendent's recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to renew Synthomat Tech Endpoint Protection subscription. So moved. Oh, go ahead.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point five, superintendent's recommendation, approval to utilize Office Team, a division of Robert Half, to support the Students' Records Department. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I do. I have a question. Why are we paying this instead of hiring someone part-time?
Would you like me to answer? I also could answer, but I think Teresa is probably more prepared than I am, so I think you are looking into that avenue.
Thank you, sir, for asking that question. It is one that I've posed, I've been here almost four years, and this would be the fourth time, so I'm pleased to be here this evening. As you can see by the superintendent's recommendation, the need for additional support in their student records department grows each year. And prior to my arrival four years ago, my understanding is that at one time we were staffed with three full-time, or at least two and a half full-time individuals, supporting student records, student registration, data quality checks, with all the information regarding our student information system. And as technology increases and the need for support and training in our building increases along with it, we are finding that each year we need support to be able to make it through our busy times, and our busy times keep stretching one into another. For example, right now, we're doing October count, and so the person that we have on staff from the temp company is holding down the records department while our district registrar helps with the October count, which is essentially our funding for the district. So, last year, we spent about forty-two thousand, and my department is budgeted to pay for this. So what I've advocated for in the past is that roughly, it's about thirty-six thousand dollars a year to have an employee, whether that be support in tech or classified, and that includes the average salary, it includes medical health and para, when we spent forty-two thousand dollars last year and we could have an employee for less than that. Granted, the budget would come out of my department this year and then for years to go, and I understand how cost of employee increases each year. But that would be my request to temporarily finish out the calendar year with Office Team, and then pose heading a TAP increase to support the needs of the department.
So, if I understood you correctly, we're paying thirty-five thousand dollars for the rest of the school year when we can get a part-time employee-
Full-time.
For the full-time employee for a year.
Correct.
That doesn't make much sense.
I understand, sir.
But if I don't, if you don't mind, Teresa and I had talked about this, and she ran this proposal to me, saying, Dr. Regal, this would be a cost-saving measure for the district. So I said, go ahead and pursue it. And I was trying to do is, I think you're trying to use this money to get you through maybe the next three, four weeks?
Right, right.
For that, she's going to post for the position, and we will get that position, so if it falls in line, she should be able to get this full-time employee maybe by, within four weeks, three to four weeks.
So we wouldn't utilize the full thirty-five thousand dollars you would potentially approve, more likely closer to five or six thousand to finish out, because we only have two weeks in December, and the district is closed for the remaining two weeks. But then use January to post and potentially hire, and my department budget accounts for the rest of the fund. So we would have spent a total of about, about twenty thousand dollars from July one through December thirty-one of this calendar year with Office Team for that temporary help. So, in years past, the finance department submits a list of vendors where we spend over twenty-five thousand dollars worth each year. And this year, at the board's request, any of those vendors that were on that list, we still need to come to you for permission. So Office Team is one of those vendors that, once I cross the fifteen thousand dollar mark, I need to come to the board and say, this is my circumstance, this is why I'm spending that amount of money. So because I'm at that fifteen thousand dollar threshold, then I'm coming to you saying, here is my situation, I could spend for the rest of the year, knowing the projects that are coming and knowing the time, because this goes forty, thirty, twenty hours a week with that person. And then as their temps, they roll off, and we have to retrain someone, so we're losing productivity there as well as efficiency in my department. But rather than continue to go the temporary route, it would be wonderful to be able to offer a position here in the district for a classified or support in tech employee.
So how long, once you posted in, in January, how long do you anticipate someone being hired?
So it would depend on the pool that we would have. We really would need to have someone in place by February, early in February, no later than March, because we start the kindergarten registration season, and that's really a full-time, you know, job, bringing in the recruiting in the kids and getting them all set up and rolling our pre-K and decay. So I would be running a tight timeline, typically post for two weeks, take a week to go hire, and then we need to get on the board agenda to get the employee approved, and, you know, that process. It is feasible. Absolutely.
Do you also need to-
Yes, yes, so that would, so pending what you decide this evening, I need to, I need to pay Office Team for the time that they've done for us already, and then potentially make sure that we're covered, because we're finishing October count right now. But then we would need to be able to come back to the board and ask for a TAP increase, a table of authorized personnel, to be able to proceed with HR and posting up, creating and posting a position.
So this thirty-five thousand covers what you owe the temp agency, count us?
Nope, that would, so-
Plus additional?
Nope, so thirty-five thousand, so if you told me you're not getting an extra FTE, then I would need to be able to spend thirty-five thousand dollars to cover the work that needs to be done between July one, well, the entire school year. So what I would, what I would ask for is, if I can get the approval to ask for a TAP increase, then I need about six thousand dollars to finish out with Office Team for the rest of this calendar year, not thirty-five thousand.
Point two thousand, we cover everything.
Absolutely, and I have the funds to do that.
So my question, how long do you propose a TAP increase?
Forever.
How long before you do it?
I mean, it's a continuing position in the district, is that what you're asking?
Right, how long before you propose it to?
Oh, next board meeting, sorry. I thought you meant, how long do I want to have a staff person? Forever.
Well, maybe, we could amend it to forty-two thousand and just get it done.
So you could amend it to twenty thousand, and that covers me through December, and then before, yeah, I've only spent thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine right now, and so we have a couple invoices that are coming, I have about seven weeks of work left, with, you know, the holidays and everything included, and then assuming we would post in January, I wouldn't be paying anyone at that time, and then so from February through June thirtieth, and then rolling onward, having an employee here in the district.
There's one thing that you need to TAP increase and all that.
So, two different things. The first thing is a superintendent's recommendation that approves the use of Office Team to go above fifteen thousand, so I'm asking for twenty thousand for that. So if you, if we change this just from thirty-five to twenty thousand, that would get me until I had someone hired. And then I'll come back in two weeks at the next board meeting for a TAP increase, and then I'll work with finance and HR departments to take the money from my budget that exists, that would be about seventeen thousand for the rest of, from January through June, and then my budget for the next school year would be reduced by forty-two thousand forever to account for that employee.
Thirty-seven thousand.
About, mm-hmm. Based on my estimates on-
The thing is, is she already has the money, it's just, we need to prove it.
I do have questions too, myself.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, we just let a young girl go that was here in this building, and now we trying to reach out to a staffing agency. Have we put this on within the district or try to hire somebody to fill this position? Are we hiring within the district, with our own people to advance them instead of steady seeking out forty-two thousand outside source, which we can probably do within-house with somebody within the district? That's what I'm concerned is.
I can only do in-house if I have a position to fill.
Okay.
So if you grant me a TAP, a table of authorized personnel to have a person in a position, then I can advertise in-house, is what we would do first, and then if no one in-house is interested, then we would post on the outside, external.
Because my, this is my personal thinking is, we finna update, be trying to approve up to forty-two thousand, why we just don't hire, give the technology a TAP, or how we do it? Hire within, or if we can, instead of going to an agency, then after another six months or another two months, we got to do all this and do all that. To me, I think we should just, just say, hey, here go a TAP, if you got the money, we need the help. I understand what we trying to do, but I think we should be trying to do something within our district instead of just sitting here going back and forth, forty-two thousand, thirty-five thousand, I spent thirteen thousand for this, and that leaves twenty-six thousand, and we keep doing the math back and forth. I understand that. But I, I think we should just quit moving the pendulum back and forth, and just say, hey, whatever you need, because we know technology, the computers ain't even, to the, out to the teachers, we approve eight hundred computers, and that's still sitting here. So now we finna hire a temporary, and that temporary is not going to be able to help with the computers, so I just feel that we should just say, hey, here go a TAP, we need to do this, we need to do that, and just, let's get this district moving, get these computers out instead of sitting in-house. That's just my opinion.
That's where I was heading to.
So, I'll make a motion, if anybody else got to say anything, to say, hey, hire some, first, we hire within, within the district, giving technology a TAP. Because if I'm not mistaken, last month, the personnel we just approved to hire somebody within technology to just come on board.
So to make sure we're on the same page, this is, so I oversee several departments for the district, and this is for the Student Records Department. Even though I do oversee technology, this is a student records-
Right.
-increase, and so this person would be serving the community, it's down on the first floor, with the families come in and whatnot, and they, you know, and get the right paperwork and whatnot, and proof of residency and those things. That would be this person's role.
So, that's my recommendation to the board, just hire, just hire somebody and stop going back and forth with this.
Well, I think there's two things on the table, right?
Yes.
I think you need twenty thousand to pay what's already being used and utilized until you can fill a TAP.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And then we need to fill a TAP, is what, is what I hear you saying.
Yep, so you-
So we do need to act on this twenty thousand dollars to begin with.
Correct.
And then make a motion to propose a TAP increase.
You need me to come back with a soup's rec for the TAP increase, or they, okay, okay.
I think we can amend it to that, if we, if we act on this one, and then you make a motion to hire a TAP.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no need to have you come back again and again. Just get it taken care of.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll act on the twenty thousand. Okay, we all through with discussion? Or, Con, you got some?
No.
Okay. All right, so I need an approval. As amended, as a twenty thousand? Twenty thousand. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Okay, now moving on towards the motion by Harvest.
I need a second. Second. Is there any discussion?
Did you get the motion, Monica?
To increase the TAP.
Yes. Okay, so, hearing none, can we move on to roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point six, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to purchase custodial supplies and equipment from Waxy Sanitary Supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point seven, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with Third Way Center to provide educational and therapeutic interventions for students with significant emotional disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we move, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point eight, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to apply Colorado Department of Human Services Tony Grasp-
Grandpa's.
Use Service Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to two point nine, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of in-state overnight travel by Monaco Elementary School to Jamestown, Colorado, by Monaco Elementary School, fifth-grade students on March first through third, 2017, their fundraising efforts.
So moved.
Okay, is there any discussion? Yeah, I do. Where's Jamestown?
Up Jamestown Canyon by Boulder.
Boulder?
It's, uh, west of, west of Boulder.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to communications, uh, I guess I would just like to, or superintendent, do you have any communications?
Uh, yes, just, uh, information for everyone is just, uh, I have the honor running with our girls on run, this Sunday, they ran a three-mile race at Washington Park. We had 30 girls from camp, so that was, uh, a very nice, long run for me, but to follow up, next week, uh, at Kearney Middle School and Adams Middle School, we're gonna be having our first annual turkey trot for our kids. We hope to have about 100 to 200 kids running, maybe more from each school. We're gonna be giving out turkeys to the top runners and medals to the top three, so it's gonna be an exciting event and a first time for our students at, uh, Adams 14.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Uh, I would just like to commend, uh, schools for doing such good things for our community. First of all, the Halloween situation, we had over, I guess, thousands of people, I don't know, uh, I don't know who made the spaghetti, but they were eating all over the place, so, and, uh, we continue to give ice cream, uh, we kept, I think we had some kids come back five or six times for ice cream, and we still have plenty of ice cream left, so I don't know if we can give that out on our thing for Hal, for the Christmas, I don't know if it, or be too cold, I don't know, but we still have some there. Also, the ROTC ball this last Saturday was great, we had some good, uh, community people there, the ROTC program did a super job, so it was really, uh, great, uh, to see what they were doing and, uh, community taking place, and I know I'm missing something. Oh, the play, I'll let Timmy talk about the play, 'cause he, he went every day, 'cause he was so in love with the play, so, go ahead, Timmy.
Yes, I did attend the play, it was very well put on, I was, uh, very impressed with the theater group, it was well-attended by the community, um, I, I just had to go see it more than one, more than one time, so I went, uh, numerous times, I didn't make the Sunday matinee, though. Uh, I'd also like to say, uh, thank you, Barb, for the invite to go to the restorative justice training. Um, I think it's something that I'm gonna look into and have conversation with the board here, I think it's something that we can support in District 14, if we can let the RSO officers, uh, figure out which part of it really pertains to, uh, our school district. I was impressed with the trainers, I was impressed with the, it gave me an opportunity to meet, um, some of the people that work for Adams 14, I know them by face, and I know them by name, but to, to actually sit down and, and have conversations, uh, meaningful conversations about what makes them do what they do, uh, was meaningful to me, um, I was very impressed with the participation, and once again, you know, I'm gonna have conversation with, uh, with the board members here about, you know, what, what can we do to support restorative justice? I don't think it, it can be a mandate from the board, but I do believe that if, if a school is doing some sort of restorative justice, that we can support, um, their activities and encourage them to participate and get more knowledge on what really it is, uh, because it is something that keeps kids in school rather than kick them out. I'd also like to report on the, the Marine Corps ball, um, it was a lot of fun, it was , uh, great to see our students and the leadership qualities that they express and show, and, and so proud to be part of Adams 14, uh, you know, I commend the officers, retired officers that, that do, uh, the training, it's, uh, it's just phenomenal, and, um, you know, we were there for the, for the Halloween bash, it was fun to see all the costumes and, uh, see all the participation, and, you know, there's some big things that, that I think, I, I support what you're saying, Mr. Rolla, about the good things that the schools are doing, I've, I've been visiting some of the schools and, and seeing what's been going on, and, you know, I, I'm just excited about, about the district. I'd also like to thank, uh, Dr. Jay for having, uh, his community forums, which, you know, we talked about last month, but they're, they're good things for the community, I still hear, hear people talking about the community forum and how it's never happened before in this district, and, and they have a place to, uh, go to, so I'm excited about the school year, and, uh, thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else has some?
Yes, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I, um, attended at Ossup on the 27th, that, um, truck and trick, truck and
Truck or treat?
Trick, truck, what, man! Um, it had to be over 1,500 to 2,000 kids, I mean, I ran out of candy, and good thing they had a backup, because it was nice and it was just fun, and, um, you just seen the community come together again, um, Adams 14, and just so proud, how, how, I also put that together, it was very nice, but also too, um, I just wanna acknowledge that, uh, at Casby, Colorado Association School Board, on December the 9th, our students, Adams 14 students will be, uh, participating and celebrate the B, so, um, I just wanna give a cloud out to Adams 14.
Joe? Uh, just a couple things here, I forgot the DAC meeting on Monday, uh, I was really, I don't know, we had 100 people there, I believe, and they showed up, and I really didn't think it was gonna be that bad, I think we'd still, I thought we were still gonna have the Bronco Blues from, with the whipping we took by Oakland, but, uh, they did show up, and, uh, if they're getting more and more involved, and I just keep hoping we get a little bit more, once they know what's happening. Uh, I do have a statement here, presented here for some people that may want to attend, we have the Legislative Breakfast, Community Reach Centers proudly presents the State of the State, uh, featured keynote speaker Lieutenant Governor Donna Lynn, you are invited Wednesday, November 16th, 2016, 7:30 to, uh, 9:00 AM, please revise by November 10th, and it's over at the Denver Marriott Westminster. So, if you can, we can attend that, someone's could attend that, be great. It, it's, the date is November 16th. 9:08, 7:30 to 9:00 AM, so. Yeah, go ahead.
So I'd also like to, uh, like to talk a little bit about, um, high school sports and junior high sports, and, and our kids that participate in all of these sports and stuff, and I was at the, uh, the basketball game at the middle school last week, and to see the condition of the uniforms that our kids are assigned, uh, is ridiculous. Um, there's gotta be some way that we can, as a board here, can make, uh, monies available that these uniforms can be at least the right size for these children, I mean, I seen them with tape on them and, and everything, the kids played well, they participated, they were proud to be with their school, they were proud to do all of that stuff, but to, uh, to see the team that they played, which it was an academy, so they, you know, they probably have a little bit more money than our district has, but to see the shape that some of our uniforms are in, uh, the kids are still participating, we've got to do something about that, I, I participate as a, as a community member in, uh, in trying to raise money for children's uniforms and stuff, and, uh, and it's something that we're gonna have to take a look at, because I'm, I'm tired of, of going to the football games, basketball games, uh, volleyball games, and, and our kids, uh, look like they came from somewhere other than Commerce City. I think they should be very proud of their schools, I think they should be, because they all participate, they have an A, B, and C, C-team at the middle school, um, and it's something that we're gonna have to take a look at, so, uh, more to come.
Uh, maybe we, we can get a breakdown on the budgets that our athletic programs are getting, how much they're being, and how, uh, maybe sometimes you can unite different sports to get, and work with the same type of budgets, some uniforms and stuff, but, uh...
To, to piggyback on what you just said, um, President Rolla, um, out that 200K we approved for the summer, I'm sure, if I'm not mistaken, it should be some money in there that we can buy those uniforms effective today, if not tomorrow, because the board allocated 200, I'm sure we ain't spent but maybe 180, 180,000, so that, as Timmy was saying, to get those uniforms, and I'm sure the principals hear from, um, Adams City Middle School, that those uniforms can be ordered, um, as soon as possible. I'm, I'm not for sure, but, um...
They will now, I mean, if the money's there, I'll make it happen.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
My thing is, I think one of the reasons for Timmy's, you don't get the proper uniforms, I think when coaches get their money and they're said, "Okay, you can buy uniforms," the first thing they do is they go look for the most expensive uniforms, so they can look great, and only certain amounts are bought, and at the middle school, I, I think we're averaging about 30 to 40, 50 kids in each sport, so they gotta limit themselves just to get maybe a reversible t-shirt, I mean, pullover, the hats, put numbers on one side for basketball, on one side, and put Adams City, so you can just reverse them instead of buying two sets of uniforms.
Right.
You know, that's what I did when I was coaching at the high school, freshmen got, I mean, they, we always say the freshmen always get the leftovers, but they do, until the next, till you buy some, then you push the uniforms down, everybody starts looking, but I think sometimes if we're struggling there and we don't have the money, we ought to probably take a look at cost, because I know when I, uh, with Skyview, I'm always looking at, uh, in the internet, and I can find shirts for six or seven dollars, and then a lot of those places will print you one, and you can get it for eight dollars, I mean, it, it's just that, uh, and I know, 'cause when I get my budget, I go gunhole to buy my baseball uniforms and I spend up to $200 a uniform, but they come far to you. But, uh, for our young kids, it's just a matter of getting some kind of...
And I just wanna respond to, uh, Mr. Thomas, you know what, uh, as a superintendent, I just wanna make sure that, that we're using the correct funds, and that we're using monies that can be spent on athletics, you know, you, you were talking about the money from the general fund, so if you let us research it, and if we're able to do that, we can make that happen for you.
I, I respect that, Dr. Brago, but sitting on this dicey for almost a year, we always, as this board has been told, there's something gonna be done, and then it's procrastinated, and it's procrastinating, we sit up here and then, from some fair reason, somebody might think we forgot, but if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Achuleta was saying, he was at a game, and it was terrible how our students looked. I was there at games, and I felt the same way, and I brought it up last year, if I'm not mistaken. Now, we had 20, $200,000 that this board approved, that started at summer, some, after school program, I mean, not after school, summer job, that 200,000 that this board approved, I'm assuming was designated to go to anything that we approve to happen for this district, if I'm not mistaken, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. If, if Mr. Achuleta is saying our students is looking bad, we as a board can allocate some money to this principal to get our students some uniforms, now I'm trying to figure out what's the problem that we have to wait again and again to help our students, I'm just asking.
And, and I said, if the money's there, and if we are in compliance, it will happen.
So when can we get an answer?
I can have a
Talk, it should be directed to Dr. Brago, 'cause I'm sure the principal can't get no money, if he can't
I can get you an answer by tomorrow, uh, maybe even today, uh, I have my finance person here, I just wanna make sure, uh, Mr. Teller, could you come up here, please?
Hold on, I got another question. Do we not combine efforts with the middle schools and the high school to, to purr for our buying power to buy uniforms? Does every school or coach has their own budget to purchase uniforms?
It should be usually to the height, each school has, should have their own budget and how they, uh, purchase their uniforms.
That doesn't make much sense, why don't we combine our efforts?
I'm sorry?
So, yeah, so, in this district, the athletic director, which is at the high school, gets funds for the high school and the middle school, to distribute those funds for, for uniforms and things like that, um, that's, I think, that, why it's so difficult, um, when you look at an athletic budget at the high school, you see that, trying to make ends meet, and then making sure there's enough for the middle school, when the high school athletic director, should be only the high school athletic director, not athletic director for, um, 612, because you run into those, those types of issues, where usually in middle schools, they have an athletic director slash AP that takes care of those, those things out of the middle school budget, and those, those funds should be allocated from the, from the distribution of the general budget when we get our allocations for schools, this is your athletic portion for Kearney, this is your athletic portion for, um, ACMS, not, here's the high school athletic director, uh, high school and middle school allocation, it makes it really confusing in trying to balance a budget.
So how does the athletic director at the high school know what the needs of the middle school are?
It's been some of my concern since I walked in the door, it's very difficult to, to, to do.
It asks, Mr. Teller, can we use that money that, that Mr. Thomas was saying, to purchase uniforms? That's all I really need to know, if we can do that, then we can make it happen.
I, I believe the money we're referencing is the money that was allocated for the summer student work program, which was $200,000 from the reserves of the general fund, and so there's about $180,000 remaining, and the answer is, the board can choose to dedicate that money, um, from their reserves to buy uniforms, um, and then I would guess the athletic director would have to organize who, where, and what sport, and how far to take that.
And I think, uh, one of the things to help, and I don't know if they do it here, but I know where I'm at, at Skyview, we have specific years that we buy, so let's say year one, of course, it's always football, football always gets the best.
It's expensive, yeah.
And so, football, okay, but the problem that I see in this district, football gets new uniforms just about every year, every year, and it shouldn't be happening that way, it should be every three or four years, and other sports, and I think there should be a lot, because, but what, what we, with football costs, we're not generating at the gate to get what we're playing, and sometimes I always wondered as a taxpayer, is it worth to have football in this community, because of what we're putting out and what it's pulling in at the gates? I don't know, and if I was a mean taxpayer, I would question that, but I love football, so, I coach football, but I think that we, as we have to be a little smarter with our money, and I think you, you choose three or four teams, and, okay, this is your year to order, so make sure that you order what you need, because you're not gonna get it for another three or four years, and I don't think we're doing that. Okay, this is softball's year, the baseball's year, or, or whatever, you get what you need because you're not gonna get it again for another three or four years. Now, at the middle school, same thing, they, they're allocated so much money, we have a program, you have a system that says, "Okay," but you don't have to buy the quality that the high school level has, because I think we only, what, middle schools' programs only last five weeks, so you only have four or five games, but if we're going to order uniforms, right now's the time to order for the girls' basketball team, which is next, uh, and Christmas, and I think the wrestling, boys' wrestling starts after Christmas, correct?
Girls' uniforms are on order.
Okay, make sure that we have enough, and, because, I mean, by now, we, every, I know when I was coaching here, every year we had to turn into the athletic secretary, how many kids participated, so we know how many participated every year, and you knew what you had to get, so I hope that we're doing that at the, I, I mean, high school's a little different, but middle school, I mean, it's, as they were, Timmy was saying, is you get a lot more kids, you can't be as expensive on the uniforms.
And, and what I hear you saying is, uh, we know now that we have some funds to help our middle school kids, uh, I will get together with Mr. Gianni, the athletic director, we'll make sure that we carry out what the board said, and we'll take care of our kids, and we'll do also what Mr. Rolla said, we'll try to make sure that we are using our funds so that they, we can stretch them and try to help as many, uh, sports as possible, we will get that done for you.
Thank you.
And I would like to see some sort of schedule made, uh, like Mr. Rolla said, like, you know, next year, we're gonna be doing volleyball, wrestling, and then the following year, we're gonna do baseball, softball, and I wanna see that type of schedule laid out.
And usually, again, Mr. Rolla's correct, you have a cycle, some sports get it this year, you know that uniforms have to last three or four years, and then each year, you're just looking at your table, whoever's next gets the uniforms, and again, there should be, uh, some type of template or, or formula whoever's next with the uniforms, and again, there should be, uh, some type of template or a formula like that. So if there is not one, we will develop one.
Oh, and also, talking about uniforms and stuff, uh, I would like to see that the coaches order the colors of the school. My understanding, there's a team sport at the high school that ordered black. I don't understand why black, because black is not one of our school colors. It was in 1954, we were black and orange. But when we were moved into the new league with Lakewood, Lakewood had black and orange, and we were told we had to change to the blacks, so we went to dark green and orange. But stay within the school colors that are designated to us. So that high school, green and orange, uh, Kearney, purple and gold, or Adams City, middle, uh, Royal Blue and Orange. So not going off whatever the coaches feel like ordering, that's what they ordered.
Absolutely. I do know off the top of my head that, uh, this year, um, I know, I do know that girls' basketball uniforms are on, on order, and we also made sure that swimming, um, the winter parkas, so when the, um, athletes get out of the water, in the, in the, in the cold air, that they have something to put on, especially if there's a fire drill or they're traveling, they have those parkas to put on, and that was something that didn't even exist before. Some of those things I did notice that weren't happening, um, but I will get that schedule together, so there's a rotation, so that every sport is, um, allocated some uniforms.
I mean, I remember when I played, and it was a long time ago, but I was proud of my uniform.
Yeah.
And we worked the school on football days, and I was proud. That was the biggest thing a kid's life was to wear a uniform. And to have someone walk around with a dingy or torn uniform, that doesn't represent us. Doesn't say who we are.
No. I was fortunate enough that they retired our uniforms when I was in school, so I still have them in my closet to this day. So, and I look at them all the time. I'm very proud of them. I won't say with school, because it's a rivalry.
And, and, and on that note, um, the kids do love to see you at their sports. So if you get an opportunity to attend their sports, I don't care if it's the C League, I went to the, to the Kearney Middle School, Adams City Middle School football game, uh, and watched those kids play their hearts out for, uh, for their school, you know? And it's just, it's, they love to see you there. So if you have an opportunity, attend your, their, their schools. They love it. They love to see you there.
Can, can I ask you a question? Uh, you may not know this, but how's our football helmets for the middle school?
I do know, did they, did they go through a rotation? Do you know?
Yeah, they have to by law.
By law, yeah, but did they do that this year?
I don't know what rotation just took place.
I can find out.
I think it was high school.
High school did, for sure.
But I meant, that also included middle school. So I think they have to be changed out every two seasons for the...
Right, concussion policy. And that's where I was getting at.
Yeah, I know that they were, um, I'm pretty positive that the, the middle school did get some. They cycled through some of the helmets when they went through the dates on them, so. Uh, but I'll double-check that for sure.
Other? Okay, then the last thing is, I guess we have to fill in a couple committee things there, and, uh, Joe was waiting to see if Mr. Archuleta would change some things, or you're willing to change, correct, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which ones were you looking at, seeing if Mr. Archuleta would change with them?
Um, I can be on the DAAC.
On DAC?
On DAC. And be the alternate for city council, if, uh, you're willing to, to move.
Sure. So you're going to take the alternate city council, Joe, is that it?
Yes, sir, and, uh, DAC. And I can also be the alternate for the Student Board of Education.
But that has, that kinda ceased, I guess.
We don't have that anymore?
I don't know, that nobody's willing to take it, I guess. So it is. Okay, I guess we need an alternate for the area boards. I guess Timmy's. Is there anybody that can?
Alternate?
I can be an alternate for that.
Alternate, yeah.
That's during the day, though.
During the day, Joe.
That's, that's right.
You okay? And then we also need faculty review committee. Well, not faculty, facility review. Is that still going on? Fourth Tuesday of every month, 5:00 PM. Committee room.
I know.
So that's, that's last Tuesday, okay?
Mm-hmm. What's the same Tuesday that we have, uh, I don't know how you're doing that. Every month at 5:00 PM? 'Cause the fourth Tuesday is when we have a board meeting.
Right, that's why I said, I don't know if that's going on.
That, you can't, I don't think we could have that, that day.
We haven't had one...
Oh, you haven't had one?
For, since last year. Um, but when we did, we would go from one to the board meeting. We would go from facility to the board.
Okay. That takes care of that, then. Uh, okay, I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Driling?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now adjourn at 8:30, uh, yeah, 8:30.
These are just some of the highlights of the Board of Education meeting. The board meets at 6:30 PM on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, and we hope to see you at a future meeting.